Joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council, Glendale Redevelopment Agency, and the Glendale Housing Authority. May we have a roll call for the City Council, please?
Council members, Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
Redevelopment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call for the agency, please.
Agency members, Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chairman Draymond.
Here.
Roll call for the Housing Authority.
Authority members, Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Mincy.
Here.
Parazian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chairman Najarian.
Here.
May we have your report?
Agenda for the July 28, 2009, joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council, Glendale Redevelopment Agency, and the Glendale Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, July 23, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Mr. Starburn.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'll go to item number one. Have we read that in already?
No, we will. Item number one is Director of Development Services and Acting Director of Community Development and Housing regarding 2010-2014 Implementation Plan for the Central Glendale Redevelopment Project and the San Fernando Corridor Redevelopment Project Areas. That one is the Agency Resolution approving 2010-2014 Implementation Plan, and that one is Authority Resolution approving 2010-2014 Implementation Plan.
And I'll go to Phil Lance, Fame Director, for the report. Phil?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Redevelopment Agency, and the Housing Authority. In 1993, the California State Legislature adopted the Redevelopment Reform Act. They called for, among other things, a report every five years on the status of agencies' actions. This is the opportunity for us to check in with you, with the community, to on the agencies' action, in addition to take some direction. We have prepared that plan beginning in 1994. The most recent -- let me step back. The law also requires us to update that midway through every five-year term. The last one you got was in 2007. It was an update in that midyear -- or midterm update. We're here with our next five-year plan. It is prepared. We've tried to prepare it in a way that gives some information, is readable, while we also stick to those things that the state provides us to put in each report. This is a plan. By adopting or receiving this, it does not approve any project. It does not approve any expenditure of funds. But it does call out the policies that you've directed us, some of the projects that we've taken on and that we will take on in the future. The housing portion is with it. As you know, 20% of the tax increment goes to the Housing Authority to help fund affordable housing. With that, I'd like to ask the two people that prepared this plan, Elena Bobolian and Ann Bogencamp, to take you through a quick presentation of the contents of the plan.
Elena?
Members of the Agency and Housing Authority, as stated, we're here to present our five-year implementation plan, which covers the years 2010 until 2014. Redevelopment agencies statewide are required to prepare this plan every five years. The plan shows how the agency's goals, projects, and expenditures will eliminate blight, and how the agency will achieve the low and moderate income housing requirements. The plan includes a discussion on current economic conditions as they heavily impact redevelopment. A more up-to-date discussion on this topic will take place with the next agenda item. There's also a section outlining the policies of the agency in the plan. The agency, during the next five years, will focus on issues such as commercial development, such as hotels, such as attracting hotels to benefit the general fund, investing in public facilities and infrastructure projects to improve quality of life, and financing strategies to maximize the receipt of tax increment for the Glendale community. Next, the plan provides an update on the various development and public improvement projects and touches on economic development efforts. Real quickly, I'll go through three of the projects that are included in the plan. One of the commercial projects is the Hyatt Hotel Place, which is located at the corner of Wilson and Central Avenue. A residential project located in our San Fernando Corridor project area is the ISIS Housing Development Project. And lastly, a public improvement project where the agency is participating in is the Adult Recreation Center. This long-planned renovation is vital to local seniors due to the programs and services which will be offered at the center. During the course of the plan, the agency has budgeted approximately $20 million to fund various projects with the goal of eliminating blight. $15 million of that is in the Central Glendale project area, and $5 million will be budgeted towards the San Fernando Road project area. Redevelopment over the years has proven to be one of the state's most meaningful economic development tools and an effective job creator. If all the projects outlined in the plan are implemented, almost 5,700 permanent jobs and 5,400 construction jobs will be created locally. Furthermore, the projects will generate over $13 million in tax increment proceeds to fund future redevelopment efforts. Lastly, the city's general fund would benefit by receiving over $2 million, mostly in transient occupancy tax, better known as the hotel tax, which is charged at hotels. That concludes my portion of the presentation. I'll pass it on to Ann Bogencamp to cover the housing section.
In the housing implementation portion of this report, there are four main obligations, four main things that we are required to report on. The first one is the status of the housing fund. This section of the report describes the balance as of 2007, 2008 fiscal year, June 30, 2008, and that's the same number that you'll find in the CAFR report that was presented at that time. It also shows projected, actual and projected revenues and expenditures through the period 2002 through 2014. And that period of time is a time established by state law. It really doesn't correspond with any of our other planning periods, but it's the state law. It also provides information -- You want to -- thanks. -- on targeting of funds. We have an obligation to target funds by income level, the affordability of our housing units, and also by age group. With regard to the age group requirement, there are two segments of the community that we're obligated to target funds. One is for nonsenior households, and one is for senior households. A nonsenior household is a family that includes nonseniors, and a senior household is strictly only senior households. According to the census, we have 70% nonsenior households and 30% senior households. The way we have invested our funds so far is 83% of our funds have gone to nonsenior and 17% to seniors. As we look at our projects that are projected through 2014, we're projecting that that will slightly increase for nonsenior households and remain approximately the same for senior households. Do you go back one? For the affordability for the income levels, these percentages, these targets, are established through our RENA numbers, and they say that we have a need for 43% of our affordable housing funds to be spent on very low-income households, 27% on low, and 30% on moderate. Through 2008, we've looked at our expenditures and figured out where they fit. 43% have gone to very low, 28% to low, and 29% to moderate. As we project out our future projects and future expenditures, we think that we will approximately meet those targets. We have other obligations from our housing funds. We have an inclusionary obligation, that we meet the requirement for 15% of the residential units developed in that area, that they be very low and low moderate. And we've projected out what we think that obligation is, and that we will approximately meet that by 2014. We've also shown that the replacement so far citywide and through 2014 will be that we are obligated to replace 60 units, which have been removed because of citywide investments, with about 87 bedrooms. And we project that we will meet that obligation as well. Finally, thanks. We're projecting, we're showing our 2005-2009 housing implementation plan, what we projected we would construct and what we actually have constructed. And as you can see, we've met the total unit obligation for that production plan. And for that 2006-2014 period, which again is a state requirement, it does have some overlap with the prior period because of the state law. It projects that we'll construct 451 units, and we currently have either completed or having construction 248 units. It's important to note that this 2006-2014 housing production plan is the same as our housing element. We've simply taken that and put it into this plan, so we are consistent with that housing element. Thanks.
Okay. Any questions for the staff members? Mr. Najarian?
I have some questions. To the housing element side of it, the entire process that we have with regard to the in-lu fees and the creation of housing within the redevelopment area.
The inclusionary requirement?
Right. How does that line up? Is that consistent with the goals of the redevelopment zone? And in terms of the -- I mean, this is a big issue. We've discussed it previously, and I'm not sure we ever came to a conclusion on that in terms of being consistent with the goals of the Redevelopment Act.
Well, this might be an appropriate place to have Mr. Garcia comment on a recent case that brings, a small case, but a rather significant one, that casts some question on the future of our inclusionary housing program.
Thank you, Mr. Starburn, members of council, Mr. Mayor. With respect to the answer to your question, is the agency, with respect to the San Fernando project area, has an obligation to make sure that a certain percentage of all the units that are developed in that project area meet the inclusionary requirement. One of the ways that we implement that is that we have an ordinance that requires a certain percentage of those units be set aside for affordable housing, or that the developer pay an in-lu fee. The case that Mr. Starburn is talking about, and we're just, we're reviewing it for its impact, as it just came out last week, was the city of Los Angeles had a similar inclusionary housing policy for one of its specific plan areas. It had very similar numbers, 15%, or you could pay an in-lu fee. There is a state law called the Costa-Hawkins Rental Housing Act, which was intended to really to get at some extreme vacancy controls that some cities impose in their rent control ordinances, which we don't have, but some cities were doing that. So the state passed a law to limit that, but the way they worded it, it was poorly drafted, and the developer in this particular case in Los Angeles challenged that project inclusionary requirement and held that the -- and the court ended up holding in a published decision that the inclusionary housing requirement was contradictory to state law, and therefore the city was precluded from enforcing it, as well as precluded from enforcing the in-lu fee. So we are looking at that, we're looking at the impact of that and how the methods that we can do to address our inclusionary obligation under state redevelopment law, other methods that we might be able to use to meet that obligation.
Should, no, not to emphasize, as Michael has, that doesn't abrogate the agency's responsibility for inclusionary housing. It just may bring into question whether you have that mechanism of passing it on to the developer, as we've done through our ordinance.
Is there a final -- let me just follow up. Is that a trial court decision, or is that a court of appeal?
It's a published court of appeal decision.
This is my district?
No, it's the Court of Appeal for the Second District here in Los Angeles. But there's a couple, I think City of LA will appeal that, and I also think that there will be a push in Sacramento to amend that legislation to carve that out. Whether that can pass or not is another question.
I think that has huge, huge ramifications in terms of development and ability for someone -- we went through the whole Dr. K thing, where he said he can't develop because of this either inclusionary fee or the inclusionary housing that he had to provide. So this case says that we can enforce that.
The case says if you have an inclusionary requirement that sets the rent levels for affordable units, that's preempted by state law. Doesn't say if we had a fee that was standalone, separate from any inclusionary requirement, we couldn't impose that, but we would need to go some additional analysis to impose that fee. Right now, our fee is tied to the ability to provide the inclusionary unit. If you can separate those two out, if you can separately justify the fee, then I think that the courts would allow that.
Keep us posted as that case gets interpreted and analyzed.
So far, there haven't been any market rate units built in the San Fernando Road Corridor, is that correct? I continue to do the case.
That is correct. We would anticipate the project we showed you here, ISIS, would be the first, or the Triangle project. Both of them are struggling with financing, as the rest of the housing industry is.
So all we've built in the San Fernando Road Corridor is affordable housing?
Is affordable.
Correct. And how many units have we built so far? And how many are already sort of in the pipeline, meaning they're under construction?
I'm looking at Peter about 100.
Just a ballpark, is it?
150.
150. 250, 3?
It's more than 400.
If you include just the ADI projects alone, are over 200, including the two under construction. I forget what the numbers are, but it's a good number.
Yes, I'd say that there are 100 that are currently completed and approximately another 200 that are in construction.
200, okay.
Close to 200.
Including the muscular dystrophy, you're also including.
United Cerebral Palsy Project, 24 units. Then you have 68 and 75, I believe, that are in development at the Algemax site.
So altogether, in San Fernando Road, we've built approximately 300.
I just heard almost 300, yes.
And we might add, during, our next topic is state budget, but during these times when the state has fiscal difficulties, they have always looked at, for at least a moment, the amount of money that is unspent in the low-mot income housing funds of the various redevelopment agencies throughout the state, and they are constantly tracking that number of the combined reserves, I won't call them reserves, unspent monies. It's harder to do low-modern income housing in many, many communities. So it's viewed as, when you're compiling a large amount of that money, it's viewed as a bad thing. In our case, we don't have, you know, our money's put to work, let's put it that way. In fact, we do not have a accumulation of those funds because they are put to work here.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments before I go to the public? We'll start with Mike Mohill, followed by Herbert Malan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. First of all, yes, I do live in Glen Oaks Canyon with you, Mr. Weaver, five minutes away. And Councilman Draymond, how condescending you were a few minutes ago in talking about the soccer games and so forth. There are more Armenians, Persians, Middle Easterns in this city, and Latinos than there are Norwegians. That's why we need soccer fields, not lieu games and all that other kind of stuff. So let's not go there, sir. I wasn't trying to put you down. Okay? Number two, I was talking about, let's do a better job as far as turning the beat around. I'm not saying we never, we don't have any type of entertainment in the city. We just need more and better to attract people from outside of Glendale to come into Glendale and spend their money here in the redevelopment area. We got the Americana.
Mr. Malan? Yeah, Mr. Mohill, agenda item one, why don't you stick to the issues?
Okay. So I just want to follow up just by saying, the current recession should be an opportunity to see how the city is going to be spending our money as an opportunity, rather than a negative force redevelop is concerned, because we're not going to be having any money from the state. They're not going to send it to us, unfortunately. We talk about it, but you know as well as I do, Arnold and the legislators, they're not sending you money this way. So we have to live with our own means. Thank you.
Thank you. Herbert Malan.
Good afternoon, Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council and Housing Authority and city staff. My name is Herbert Malano. I want to give you my interpretation of what I've seen in the past with regard to the implementation plans of the redevelopment area projects. When I was looking at the environmental impact reports, they continually make reference to the goals and objectives with regard to this ratio of increased population and the allocation of parkland to that population, using as a minimum the national standards of 1,000, one acre per 1,000 additional population. So as I look at these projections for these redevelopment areas, the next five years, an additional 1,100 residents, I was wondering if those objectives of parkland to this additional number of residents is being addressed somehow and incorporated into the plan. My contention, you know, in the past few years, has been that, you know, it has not been looked at in a really proactive way, that the goals are set, the references made in the environmental impact report, but eventually it's not truly incorporated into the plan to say, look, every time we add another 500 people, we should be looking at at least a minimum of a half an acre to accommodate those needs. And I mean, I'm looking back at the deficiencies that have accumulated through decades of additional development that have not had the corresponding increase in parkland. But as a way of preventing in the future, you know, the type of problems that, you know, my tenants face, you know, on a daily basis, the lack of sufficient recreational facilities for kids. So if in these areas, you're going to have increments of 500 residents, at least from these projects in the next couple of years, and if the economy turns around, I wonder if within these implementation plans, are references made to continually keep up to date with regard to the additional requirements for parkland in these areas? That's my question. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any comments from the city council members? Do you have any kind of general response or comment? Actually, we'll go to Mr. Draymond first.
Oh, for sure, I do. I can't let this opportunity go by. I want to address Mr. Mohill, and this is addressed specifically to Mr. Mohill, not to council regulars in general, people who come before us, people who have questions, people who have information to impart to any of our agencies, whether it's the Redevelopment Agency, the Housing Authority, the City Council, or any combination of those in joint session. Mr. Mohill, I'm sorry you take it as a condescending comment. It was meant to alleviate some of the tension in the room. I glanced over at Mr. Malano, watching him, as I would categorize it, die a thousand deaths, sitting there listening to your comments in regard to him, pulling him into what I consider to be your sort of special brand of cockamamie comments up here. You turn to Councilmember Najarian, and you say to him, quote, "Armenians like soccer, don't they, Mr. Najarian? Hispanics like soccer too, don't they, Mr. Quintero? I think," and you can quote me and rev up your pal with the website out there, "I think," and this is just me speaking, "that you are an uninformed racially insensitive nutcase. And if you consider my comment before condescending, consider this more so. I think you are uninformed, and I think you come before this council, you come before the various agencies, you are not informed on the topics, you generally come with inflammatory comments, and they generally end with some kind of racial overtone." I recall to this day your very first appearance here. Your comment was before this council, at least while I was here on this council, which was, "I came here X number of years ago. I got my piece of the rock. Why do we have to continue to allow the population to continue to grow in this city of people from other places in the world, other, you know, immigrants? No, I understand Norwegians are a small population worldwide. That wasn't the point. Mr. Mohill, I wish you would spend some time. You mentioned Mr. Allen, you mentioned Mr. Mohill. Why don't, Mr. Malano, why don't you sit down with them and let them help educate you on some of these issues before you come to the podium and spew some of this nonsense?" Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Did you have any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to point out, the Redevelopment Agency has many objectives, many projects we're working on. Mr. Malano has identified parks specifically. Yes, if there was some population that was increased, you would, I think, want to have more parks. There is, under the policy section of our report, it indicates the policy that you all adopted, and I think was going to your point, Mr. Quintero, of how many units have been developed and what amount of increment will we be setting aside. You do have a policy to set aside that increment specifically for parks and libraries. I'm not sure that it's appropriate in this plan, unless you do, that's your decision, whether you want to create certain city policy in keeping up park space with residents. But I think what we've heard from you, the direction, is that this agency is supportive of recreational and park space and open space in both our project areas.
Well, on the issue of park space, I've only repeated it, oh, I don't know, maybe 100 times, but when you look at, but let's go ahead and get into it again. When you look at South Glendale, south of the 134, as Burbank or Pasadena for that matter, and you have multifamily apartment projects, like the one that Mr. Malano invested in years ago, when you have that high-density housing, what exactly is the city going to do? Are we going to pay? Literally, it would take tens of millions of dollars to buy these multifamily properties. It would take tens of millions of dollars to move the residents out and the sociological displacements that would take place, people, young kids and so forth, growing up in neighborhoods, and all of a sudden, the city would come along and buy a square block of South Glendale to create a soccer, to create soccer fields, et cetera. I mean, it is just, the idea and the concept is so bizarre and so insane that I can't believe that year after year, we continue to listen to it. Our only hope for soccer fields and for extended parks are the existing middle schools and elementary schools, and perhaps some adjacent land from time to time. We've been fortunate enough, Columbus would be the next one, but all of the different schools that we're currently trying to turn into multi-use facilities. That is it. That and the mini-parks, when we can afford to, or when a property owner is willing to sell a corner lot and so forth, we've built the mini-parks. And that's all we can do, and that is all that cities similarly situated can do. And that's in good economic times, never mind the kind of crisis that we're in now. So quite frankly, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, it was the investor class that came to Glendale and built those multifamily projects, packed people in, took advantage of the zoning at the time. They are the people that ruined this city. Many of us remember in the 1970s and even into the 1980s, when there were multiple single-family neighborhoods in this city, and people came along, knocked them down, built apartment units, built condominium units, and that's what we're faced with now. So I've only repeated that one about 100 times, but Mr. Weaver, did you have a comment?
I think I've talked about this before. All my years on the City Council, what I consider my most disappointing loss in a vote, I think, was three to two. And that's when, before any of you were on the council, we were looking at the development north of Wilson and Brand, and Glendale Avenue. Shopping center there was being torn down, and the shopping center there today was proposed. But I took GIS map, I broke it down and laid out soccer fields, whatever on there. I think we could get three soccer fields on there, baseball field, another facility, save Churchill's Restaurant with outdoor patio, the Bank of America, that could have been done. The reason I did it, because I read the city's own report of what sector of Glendale needed park more than any other. I always figured it was down below Colorado, down there, none at all. Number one was right out here above Wilson in Glendale Sector, greatest need per capita. And I laid it out, and I showed it, and they said, oh, no, we need the sales tax revenue to be generated, which I think was projected at $700,000. to be generated," which I think was projected at $700,000. I did some research on that, it showed it'd be about $300,000. I don't know what we're getting today. But for that sales tax revenue, we gave up a large community park for the residents of this area, three-two vote, as I recall. That's my most disappointing loss in all the years I've been here. And a chance to get land like that, below Colorado in that sector, so far in between. We had an opportunity here, and I think blew it.
I agree with you 100%. At the time, I agreed with you, absolutely. That was a loss to the community. And perhaps it will be, with the downturn in the real estate cycle, there will be some possibilities of commercial properties that may come up for sale. Any other comments on the issue at hand?
Want some motions?
Okay.
I move 1A. Wait, is the agency an authority? Right?
Yeah.
Okay, I move 1A for the agency.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Chairman, roll call.
Well, absolutely, yes. It's just, you know how power corrupts, absolutely.
Control, control.
Let's have a roll call for the agency.
Agency members, Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Chairman Drayman.
And for the housing, 1C.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Authority members, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Mincy?
Yes.
Porosian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Chairman Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, just a matter of procedure, those that are preparing these, this material for us, there are certain agency people, get it in full color, and it's beautiful, and you can figure out so much more about it. Mrs. Porosian and I get it in plain old black and white memograph.
Well?
And if there's some way that we could have the same as other people, we'd really appreciate it. Look at their, they're donating.
Mr. Mincy, that is our fault. I apologize, and we will get you a color copy.
Thank you. I have one. Can you read agency?
Item number two, joint meeting, item number two, City Manager, regarding discussion of state budget and impact on Glendale City Redevelopment Agency and Housing Authority.
Okay.
Copy.
Mr. Starber?
Yes.
Want to?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Housing Authority, and Redevelopment Agency, this is a presentation update on what came together last week and what I believe has been signed by the governor, which is the state's budget. At least the last report I had, he was expected to sign it. I don't know that we've actually received word that he's signed it, but he's expected to. Some prefatory comments, then I'll turn to Bob Elliott, Director of Finance, to take you through this brief update that we have, brief but fairly significant in terms of its implications. For the past month or so, we've been following the goings-on in Sacramento as it has labored to balance its budget for the current fiscal year. Having a gap of somewhere in the neighborhood of $26 to $27 billion, as we've all come to know, when the state is wrestling with that kind of a fiscal problem, we are all in danger. Danger of having the state look to local agencies, schools, counties, cities, special districts, to help solve the state's problem. Mr. Mohill said, "We can no longer count on the state sending us money. Therefore, we will need to live within our means." The state hasn't sent us money, and if they would leave us the hell alone, we would stay within our budget, live within our means, and be okay. It's when the state dips down and takes local resources at a time when cities, Glendale included, is wrestling with efforts to balance our own budget in economic times that haven't been as they are for the last 50 years, challenges that we haven't seen the likes of since 1978, when Prop 13 passed, and this is actually worse economically speaking. And in those times, then the state, in an effort to balance its budget, comes down and compounds our problem by taking local resources away from being applied at the local level. The last several weeks have been very frustrating because we have tried to keep track of what's happening in Sacramento. We are members of the League of California Cities, and they have a very adept crew that watches the state and lobbies and feeds us information. We're members of the California Redevelopment Association. It too has very adept lobbyists, and they try to track this information. We have our own lobbying firm, and they too track it. But in spite of that, getting good solid information to know what's going on is very, very difficult, because I've come to believe that in times like this, the standards that are applied at the local level for transparency and openness do not apply to the state legislature or the Big Five or the governor's office. And in fact, they work to the contrary. They work to keep information away from the public and local agencies because they're concerned of what will happen if indeed they begin to hear from their constituent groups, and they have many, and they will hear from them. Be that as it may, as we enter the last three weeks, we received information that the state was looking at generally three different areas of possible takes from cities, and some of these were played off against each other. We met with our state Senator Carol Liu, and at one point, she said, "Well, would you prefer to have this one instead of this one?" And our response was, "Don't take any of them." Well, what appeared to be an either-or option situation, where maybe they were playing one off against another, ended up this past week in a flurry of action that it became very apparent that we would likely have all three of the hammers dropped on cities and counties by three different takes from cities that would have an impact on us, again, at a time that we are at an economic low and facing our own challenges, the likes of which we've never seen in cities, in terms of the size of the take. So this isn't a matter of the state not sending us money, it's a matter of the state now taking a considerable amount of resources out of this community in order to balance a budget that I predict by the time the ink dries and the budget will already be billions of dollars out of balance. LA Times said the same thing today. This budget is already out of balance before the governor signs it, and they know it. So they're going to have to return from their summer recess and do more work to try and figure out how to close a very big gap in their budget, one that I expect will get even wider. And as that goes on, we need to continue to be very, very concerned about the implications of that. So in the context of all of that, we're going to share with you what it is we know at the moment, and it at least does seem to be settled until August, when the legislature comes back from recess. On the basis of what we know, we have done work last week and this week to try and look at the implications of the state's takeaway of resources from us, both the general fund as well as our redevelopment agency. There was a big threat of gas tax, and we'll take you through that. That threat seems to have been abated, at least for the moment, and maybe for this year, but likely will be back on the table again next year. And we'll have some recommendations for you as to how to best keep the projects we can on track, but there will be considerable impact by the state's actions.
Could I ask one question? In your opinion, those that you listen to, has the state in any way, shape, or form tried to address the structural problems at the state level with this budget?
No.
So?
No, and I think that's the--
Same problems exist next year, and again, year after year, until they fix it.
What they've been calling it in Sacramento is the state continues to kick the can down the road. Nobody stops and tries to fix the can, because I think it's gotten to the point, it is so large, and they've been doing that for so long, that the house of cards in this economic climate is just crumbling, and it's so big that they can't figure it out. You've got issues like term limits, which the LA Times referenced as being one of the problems, that legislators are constantly looking. You've got assembly members, I think, who are six years, and senators who are eight years. Problems this big require a long time to try and fix. They require policies that need a great deal of thought and attention over time to put into place. And that just isn't a characteristic of the state legislature anymore. So in this case, when you're faced with a $26 or $27 billion problem, it's just so large that all they've been able to do is try and apply some one-time fixes, some long-term fixes, some drastic fixes, many of which won't carry over to next year. So it's estimated they will face somewhere in the neighborhood of 10-plus billion-dollar deficit going to next year, just because some of the fixes this year are one-time. They won't be able to repeat them next year. Things like the personal income tax advancement, in which we're all going to be making a loan to the state, hopefully to get repaid when we file our taxes next year. The deferral of one of the payroll checks from June into July, which I think is $1.3 billion. So you delay paying your employees a month, so that expenditure gets recorded in the next fiscal year. Well, unless you continue to do that every year forever, eventually you end up with one more paycheck in a year than you need, in which case you have to pay, you have to pay the price for that. So there are those kinds of mechanisms that assure them of having a deficit this next year. They also have a number of question marks on their ability on some of the items that they've implemented. For example, the takeaway from redevelopment agencies, they will have a lawsuit. Lawsuit on this issue was filed last year. The state has tried to restructure the take in hopes of protecting it from a challenge, but there'll be a lawsuit, and at least the estimate is, from some very bright attorneys, the state is going to lose the lawsuit. In which case, they'll have another $2 billion problem.
And I presume there could be, it's not a stay, but what do they call it? An injunction?
Yeah.
So they can't get it, and then they'll have to come to us for something else.
I think we'll see the same scenario this year we saw last year. The payments required be made by May 10. Last year, the same schedule was in place. The lawsuit was filed, and it came down to where they got a decision in the waning months, or the waning days before May 10. In the meantime, had an injunction preventing agencies from having to make those payments. And the same thing will probably happen. This time, there may be more time taken because there's a, the law was crafted a little differently to specifically relate school districts that may benefit by actually being in or around project areas. So a little different set of facts, and the take is much, much larger. Last year was $350 million. This year, it's $1.7 billion in one year. So with that, let me have Bob begin to take you through some of the numbers and implications on our capital improvement program. Bob?
Maybe we just take questions?
No.
No, I didn't give them. Jump right ahead. I just wanted to walk council and agency members through the items that were at stake during the budget process. Again, there was $2 billion from redevelopment agencies, $1.7 billion this year, and about $350 million for next budget year. Proposition 1A, which was constitutionally guaranteed in 2004, allows the state to borrow money out of property tax from local governments, and that was to the tune of $1.9 billion. They had talked, discussed at length that the state about taking, or first borrowing and then taking our gas tax money. There was tremendous opposition from local agencies, and I think this issue, because it was well-understood, probably was unsuccessful. Lastly, there was a lesser item in some respects, the City of Industry Redevelopment Proposal, and we can get into that in a little bit.
What, later in the presentation, you'll do that?
Yeah. What we know in terms of what was passed is they decided to go ahead with the $2 billion take from redevelopment agency. That translates to us, the City of Glendale Redevelopment Agency, in a check being written next May for $11 million. And if we go forward into 2010, '11, another $2.3 million.
A little editorial comment on this one. It's very likely there will be many, many redevelopment agencies who won't be able to write their checks. They just won't have the funds, or to do so will impair existing bonds. The law provides that if the agency can't make its payment, and if the city's general fund doesn't then step in and loan it the money to make its payment, then what's called the death penalty befalls that agency, which means all of their redevelopment powers, with the exception of continuing to pay debt and passing through tax increment to their other agencies are obligated to, they go out of business. Essentially, they have to cease operations. Their administrative costs can't exceed 75% of the previous year's administrative costs. So essentially, they're put into a hibernation mode until they make their payments to the state.
And unemployment.
Pardon me?
And unemployment. All the people that are in redevelopment, they're all gone. They're laid off.
And my guess is, at the level of this take, this is a huge takeaway from redevelopment agencies. We've never seen anything like this before, and there have been ERAF takes before. This is just huge. $11 million for the City of Glendale. Imagine LA City is $86 million. They'll need to write a check for $86 million from their redevelopment agency. Granted, their budget's big, but $86 million is still a tremendous amount of money. And I guess there will be many, many redevelopment agencies that won't be able to make this payment.
Additionally, what this does is, because of the uncertainty and the potential of the, or the certainty of the lawsuit that will be moving forward, it very much freezes the bond market. We had planned to do a bond issue last year. We postponed it due to the state budget and some of the uncertainties and the ERAF shifts. To this year, this kind of puts us on hold again, and that has impacts on our CIP, which we'll get into. But if you recall, our bond sizing was about $25 million. So there are definite impacts with this action. Again, the Prop 1A loan totaled about $1.9 billion statewide. Up until this morning, we were under the assumption that would be a loan from us to the state. We learned this morning that they just intend to take it from our property tax proceeds as they see fit, and we'll have to figure out the accounting for that.
Although, if I can, it still remains a loan. We thought, like redevelopment, we'd have to write a check. Well, the legislation actually provides the county auditor controller will take the money out of our property tax revenue. So instead of getting our normal payment in December and then another one in--
April.
--in April, they will deduct what they calculate are 8% to be, and the legislation provides for a take of 8% of your property tax revenues. So the auditor collector will be calculating that and sending that on to the state. And then the challenge for Bob then is trying to figure out what that amount is and how to record it as a loan in our books, because the state is obligated to repay the money within three years with interest at a rate that is higher than what they earn in their pooled agency investment fund. They don't say what the rate is or how much more it should be, but they give that responsibility to the State Director of Finance to set a rate, but the rate is supposed to be higher than the pooled agency investment fund. There's a little aside on this take, that the legislation allows for the payments to be, or the amount owed by the state to be what's called securitized, which means you can bond it. You can go out and sell bonds to a state joint powers authority and then have the ability to get your money back, with the state obligated then to make the payments on the bonds. The question will be whether we're better off economically to keep the loan on our books and draw the interest, or whether we're better off participating in the bond fund, in which case you'll probably get a diminished amount from what the state owes you.
And that's probably for cash.
Well, that's the other thing is, who's, and you know, that's actually mentioned in the legislation, that the state will likely have a terrible credit rating, in which case the rates are very high, and they've set a maximum on the rates that could be paid for that bonding. So it may very well be that bonds won't be able to be sold. But that'll be a future decision for us.
The securitization of that would be likely for cities that have cash flow issues, and that's probably not something we would look at. Our estimate at this point is the take would be, or the loan would be roughly $4 million over the course of this budget year. Some of the items that were discussed, again, the City of Industry Redevelopment Proposal, and there's a lot of detail on that, and I'm not a redevelopment expert, and Phil's here, that he may shed some light on it. As I understand it, what that was going to do was, if cities opted in for this proposal, they would surrender 10% of their tax increment in exchange for a 40-year extension on their project lives. And as we have come to learn, that was tabled, at least for now.
Question, that was for years, whether the area is blighted or not, right?
Yeah, and part of the idea was that then the state could turn around and bond against that amount of money, and it would net them about $3 billion. So all in all, it really wouldn't net them a tremendous amount.
It might be useful.
The 40-year extension, that would be 40 years from the date of the signatures? Or would it be 40 years from the date of the sunlighting, or rather, the sunset of the--
I believe it'd be 40 years from the sunset date.
On top of, effectively. The background to this proposal, just very briefly, is the City of Industry has for several years been looking at opportunities to extend the life of the redevelopment agency project area, one of the largest in the state, and one of those that has been held up in the past as being abusive of redevelopment powers, redeveloping cow pastures, for example. They have had an interest for the last couple of years with the president of Majestic Realty of building an NFL stadium to attract an NFL team, and the City of Industry would like to use the redevelopment bonding process for doing a tremendous amount of infrastructure improvements to support that stadium. For that reason, and because industry's redevelopment project area produces a tremendous amount of tax increment, they just don't want to see that end. And so they have been looking for mechanisms to try and convince the legislature to allow them to extend the life of their agency. With the state facing its fiscal crisis, they went, "Aha, we have a mechanism that can help you. It'll meet our needs, the City of Industry, as well as benefit every other redevelopment project area." And that is extend their life, eliminate any of the previous caps that were placed on their increment, and it actually eliminated any of the previous negotiated pass-through agreements. negotiated pass-through agreements for tax increment. So as you can imagine, LA County, before this item was even determined, the state had already announced it was going to sue if indeed it passed. Counties would hate this provision. And frankly, it's very likely the California Redevelopment Association, although our members of redevelopment agencies would have liked to come out in opposition to this, because it's just, it really is an abuse of the redevelopment process that was created in the Constitution in 1954, so. But it, we can, we can anticipate it will be back. It wasn't, it wasn't defeated, it was just tabled, and the City of Industry will continue to work this.
One other item that did not pass, as we talked about, was the take or even the loan of gas tax money. For us, that would have meant about $3.3 million this year. That money is set aside in a special revenue fund that is used for, strictly for road repair, and that's taxed collected at the pump. So that would have had a, a large impact on our CIP in terms of the road repair and gas tax fund. So moving, moving ahead, as we've stated, the CRA will probably file a lawsuit, or likely to file a lawsuit. Our ERAF shift is $11 million. Again, that would be due and payable in May. We talked a little bit about our, having the need to postpone our bond issue, at least for this year, perhaps indefinitely, depends on how the credit markets view all of this. And we'll talk a little bit about the CIP in a minute. And again, the Prop 1A loan will be recorded this year as it, as it goes through the payment Some of the projects that are impacted, as you recall, we had planned on funding a number of capital projects with the bond issue, notably the Adult Recreation Center, which was $7 million. Improvements to the Central Library of $10 million. The Columbus Soccer Field, or $3.2 million. And the Town Center ARC connection with $4.5 million. And then the Central Avenue improvements were going to be done through increment, pay-as-you-go type funding. So some of the items we have discussed to address this is using agency, redevelopment agency cash to finish off the Adult Recreation Center in lieu of the bond issue. Continuing ahead with the ARC Town Center connection for $4.5 million. And then postponing the Central Library project outside of spending a minimum, the $1.3 million to do the air conditioning and utility connections and some of the interior furnishings. The majority of the project would be postponed. Other projects postponed would be the Columbus Soccer Field and the Central Avenue improvements. What we can do from this point, obviously, these items will be revisited as we work through this budget year and next, and look at how other ways we can fund those projects. We still may be able to issue bonds in, in next year or the year after. We have up until 2014 to issue debt, with the caveat that we spend it within three years. And it does impact the agency's ability to do other projects or developments within the project areas, if we use their cash to basically pay for our projects now.
Weaver?
Want to get this straight. This situation is not caused by fiscal irresponsibility of the City of Glendale or the terrible high wages we pay our employees for their work, right? This isn't being caused by that, is it?
It's nothing to do with it.
I just want to get that straight, because we keep hearing that we have all these problems because of irresponsible way this council and city staff operate. We pay too high wages. If we knew and could foresee the downturn in the market, recession, whatever, we wouldn't have these problems, right? No way. This is way worse than that.
Just a quick comment on that, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Weaver. Actually, the extent to which we have been conservative in previous financings in the redevelopment agency, for example, having what's called a coverage test of 1.4, which is how much tax increment as a ratio you want to have to your debt payments. The industry requires about 1 and 1/4. We tried to maintain a 1.4. We have in our last issues. Maintaining cushions, and in fact, you remember seeing in previous cash flows, a $3 million uncommitted annual. That has really put us in a very good position from a cash standpoint, so that as a state, even after the state has come down and taken $11 million out of our cash position, we're able to still continue a number of the considerable projects, drawing down our cash reserves considerably. I think the projections will end up with about $6 million in cash reserve, and severely limiting our ability, if a project walked in the door and needed more than that, I don't, we wouldn't have the ability to fund it. But being able to proceed with these projects in anticipation that when the, the air does clear on financing, we can then go back into the bond market, leverage our future tax increment, do bonds. The resolutions you adopted would allow you 18 months after the end of a project to reimburse?
Right.
Actually, once the project is put into service, so whenever that project is done, you'd have 18 months to reimburse yourself.
Then you have 18 months after that point, if you've sold bonds, to reimburse yourself and exchange your redevelopment agency general money for the bond money. And so we have quite a bit of latitude and have had that latitude, because we've been rather conservative in, in our budgeting in the past. Now, the, the big impacts are going to be Columbus Soccer Field. That could be a year delay if, for some reason, it's probably not very likely, but if for some reason the bond market clears sooner than that, we could be back sometime this fiscal year. That's unlikely, with the litigation, it's likely going to draw out over this fiscal year. The same with the Central Avenue improvements. We do need to address the condition of the roadway on Central Avenue. It's getting worse and worse. This is not the widening, this is the roadwork, and we will continue to look for ways to address those issues. But given its size, it's going to be very difficult, and that, too, will need to be delayed for a while. But being able to still address Adult Recreation Center, the passageway, we call the Town Center ARC connection, do some update of Central Library, is because of our rather conservative cash position, the redevelopment agency.
Any comments?
Right.
Bro observations?
The lawsuits, the injunctions put on, the state's going to come back for alternatives if they can.
We should mention here, as we look forward to next year, we're still wrestling with this year, but gas tax is not off the table. I mean, I don't think it'll resurface this year, but you know it'll be there again next year. Now, unless the legislature got a good dose of resistance, and they see it as kind of the third rate, maybe they won't revisit it again, but the likelihood is it'll be back in some form again in year two, in 2010 and '11. Redevelopment Agency take, they've tapped us for $11 million this year. If they still face a significant problem, they're looking to tap redevelopment agencies for another $350 million next year, which would be another $2 million of agency takeaway. That number could go up. It went up this year. Nobody ever anticipated the size of take that they finally included in the budget. It wasn't in our wildest imaginations that they'd go to $1.7 billion.
Stubber, do you know how many bills they broke that budget up into so they could?
I think there were 32.
32?
I think there were 32 different bills.
Broken to 32, so you could vote for, against one that would hurt your district and vote for ones that wouldn't hurt your district. That was the strategy of doing this. Do we know how our representatives voted?
Oh, we do.
Did they vote for us?
The only takeaway that our representative, see, our Senator voted for the entire package, voted in support of the entire package, all of the takeaways. Our Assembly member did not vote on the redevelopment agency takeaway, if I recall, and I wasn't able to find the vote on the gas tax. I believe he supported not taking the gas tax. I think his vote was a no on the gas tax legislation.
Hey, any comments?
This will be a very effective stimulus for attorneys.
There'll be that.
You certainly have one.
This is anti-stimulus for
I have one card from the public, and Mike Mohill is not in the room, so. Right, do we need a motion to file, or?
I'd like to move that we adjourn for the City
Well, let me just, so you're going to, and this is changing day by day as the Governor gets through and slices it up. You'll be updating us.
If, we're not anticipating that this will change. That doesn't mean it won't. Everything we've been hearing, the Governor now has to find the billion dollars that wasn't part of the package for gas tax. Everything I've heard, that'll be a reduction of the state reserve and a takeaway from some of the social services programs the state's responsible for. We're not expecting the Governor to revisit these issues. I don't think he can. I think he can blue-line, but for example, he can't go back and do the, the gas tax take. That's not a blue-line responsibility. So we don't think this will change. We will continue to monitor. We will have to come back to you as each of these projects come forward and probably make some adjustments in budget, because we had anticipated funding through the, the bonds. And of course, we, I, just this week, actually latter part, you know, just this week communicated with Dr. Escalante on the outcome of our review and its impact on Columbus Soccer Field. I've yet to hear back from Dr. Escalante on the implications of that. I'm under the impression that they have ceded the field and will use it as a school field, it just won't be the full upgraded soccer field, and I'm hopeful they can stay in that condition for whatever time it takes us to get to a point that the bond market will clear and we can look at financing. Frankly, I think, I think given the level of the take and, and the possible implications, we're still in relatively good position, given all of that and everything we've had to face.
I'm just curious, wonder how many cities are going to go bankrupt?
Well, it is interesting. The legislation on the general fund take has a provision for hardship, and it provides that a city that can show to the Director of Finance that they meet a hardship condition, one of which is having filed or near filing for bankruptcy, or an inability to fund what was referred to as core public services. I don't know what that is, because it's not defined. But they can file for a hardship case. And the legislation provided that the hardship cases, to the extent they're granted, will be spread among the remaining public agencies within a given county. So if Los Angeles County has a hardship case that's granted, then the, then the borrowing from the general fund could go up to the other agencies. Right now, it's 8%. It could go up from there. I don't, I haven't heard of very many agencies in Los Angeles County that are at or near bankruptcy. There is one that we've heard about, I think it's El Monte, has been toying with the possibility. You know, Vallejo, I think, is the only city in the state that has actually filed for bankruptcy. So if you were in the county, the county in which Vallejo is located, you'd be anticipating having to shoulder a little more than your fair share for that one.
Oh, man.
So that's everything we know at this point.
Want an adjournment now?
Yep.
I'd like to move to adjourn for the City Council.
Second.
I'd like to move to adjourn for the redevelopment agency.
Second.
I'd like to move to adjourn for the housing authority.
Second. Authorities adjourn.
This council is